I do recognize it's a school night and as we have some of our best students here, we want to make sure we get you home in time to do your homework. Okay, we're just gonna get started. Do I need anything? Okay. Good evening and welcome to the regular business meeting of the Radnor Township School Board on Tuesday, September 30th, 2025. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. I would like to report that the board met on Tuesday, September 30th, 2025, to discuss a real estate assessment. The next item on the agenda is the report from our student representative. We have a new student representative this month, Katie Bowman. Hi, Katie.
Hi, how are you?
Good. I was worried you weren't here, though, because usually they sit right up front, so I was like, oh, no. Welcome, thank you for joining us.
Thank you so much for having me. Good evening, Radnor Community School Board and Superintendent Dr. Bachelor. My name is Katie Bowman, and I'm a junior at Radnor High School, and I am so excited to serve as your new student representative of the high school to the school board. Every month, I will come to these board meetings and share some news from the high school. So, let's get started. First and foremost, happy new school year. To welcome us back into the swing of things, we were greeted with a new phone policy implemented to the whole school district called "Off and Away." Cellular devices are to be shut down and stored in a secure location, like school bags or lockers. As a direct result, students are more engaged with each other, having real conversations and not relying on screens for companionship. Next, auditions for Arthur Miller's play, "The Crucible," were held earlier this month. Rehearsals are going so well, and the show will take place in late November. Come see me as Mary Warren. Next up, Radnor Fall Sports are in full swing. Packed rosters for all fall sports are secured, and as the season winds down, there are plenty of senior night celebrations to be had. Today, our golf team played upper derby in the Central League Championship Games. And all Radnor students, especially the football team, are excited for the LM game, which is just around the corner, so more about that in October's meeting. In other news, there has been a very significant change that has come to Radnor: a late bus. Students at the high school can now ride the late bus Monday through Thursday, with two departure times being 4:30 and 5:30. This new bus will allow students to participate in after-school activities without uncertainty of a ride home. We also had our club fair recently to promote involvement in our awesome school community, and plus, there was candy at most stands, so that's a win-win. And so, this concludes my report. That's all for now. Thank you so much, and I'll see you all next month.
Thank you, Katie. That was a great first month. Dr. Bachelor, you're up. We're looking for superintendent's remarks.
I can't top Katie's. Welcome, Katie. It's great to have you. I have just a few items that I want to share before, and I know that I am between all of you and the recognition, so I will keep this brief as well. But we're off to a great start. It is always wonderful to have all our students back in our buildings. There's so much work that goes into summer and planning, and then, once the year gets up and running, it has been nice to be back in that flow once we get into that Week Two and Week Three. It's been really great, and I just want to say thank you, and to all the community members here and those two or three that may be listening, just how much we appreciate and value that our parents entrust, you know, your students to us, and that everyone in our district, from our support staff, our teachers, our administrators, take that so seriously, take that with such pride, and it's so wonderful to have all our kids, you know, back in school. So it's been a great start to the school year. We have some donations on tonight's agenda. We want to thank the Bat family for their very generous donation. That is the donation that's actually helping us fund and has provided the fund for those late buses, so I'll share that in a moment as well, some more details. And then I also want to thank our Radnor Educational Foundation. They, each year now, set aside a sum of dollars that now our staff will be applying for grants, so the board will be approving that $100,000 tonight, but then our staff and members of our community can be applying for grants that will help support our students. I want to congratulate Brian Pauling. Brian was involved in the Education Policy Leadership Center many years ago, and through his work, not only what he does here in Radnor, but how he works with and supports so many districts, we are truly lucky to have Brian as our Director of Business Administration because he is a leader in the state when it comes to business administration, and others have noticed that, and the Educational Policy Leadership Network Center noticed that, invited Brian back for their Alumni Award this year. So congratulations, Mr. Pauling. I'm gonna be in trouble later for putting that on there, but wanted to congratulate you. Our Fourth Annual Multicultural Resource Fair was just this past Saturday. Our staff, our teachers, who put this together are truly amazing. It was a wonderful day on Saturday. So many resources provided for our community. Not only the resources for our community, it was so nice to see so many of our students who were there volunteering and helping and making it a success. So I just want to thank our staff for everything they do to support that very important event to kick off the school year. And then, as Katie mentioned, we're calling it the Late Lift. So the Late Lift, it's running Monday through Thursday. Be patient with us. We are still in a little bit of a trial and error. We have two times right now on the Late Lift. At the high school, we have 4:30 and 5:30. We're not seeing as much foot traffic on the 4:30 run. We're seeing more foot traffic on the 5:30 run. We're seeing more students take advantage of that. So we may be adjusting it as we move forward. We're still trying to figure out how to make this work well. Obviously, we can't have buses that go exactly to everyone's house, so we had to pick locations that would still work for our students, and we're trying to adjust those locations as we move forward. But we know that there's always been a challenge for, you know, if both parents are working, kids need a ride from, you know, home from activities, both at the middle school and high school. This is something our community has talked about, and we're thrilled to be able to provide this, but stay tuned. We're gonna adjust it, and students. Dr. Mack is here. Dr. Mack, you see him in the hallways every day. Let us know. Give us feedback. What's working with the Late Lift? What's not working with it? Because we're willing to make adjustments. Our Transportation Department has just been incredible with trying to make this work. It will start for the middle school, October 6th. That's when our clubs begin at the middle school. We want to get every student involved with clubs after school, so the more students that can be involved, and now they have ways to, a way to get home after it. So we're really excited about it, and I just, again, want to thank everyone for making it possible, and our students for their patience and flexibility as we figure out what works the best. And then upcoming events. It's, we're well into the school year, and you can see October. We've got a lot of exciting events, and I just want to share with the community and the school board so they see what's coming up. And that concludes, I believe, superintendent remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bachelor, and thank you again to both the Bat family and ref for their generous donations. It really, really helps with our operating programs, so we do appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is recognitions, and I think Dr. Babson raised his hand to do these. Oh, I'm sorry, the first one's PSBA. I'm sorry. I'm always so, more, I'm always more excited to recognize the students than the board. I apologize. Do you want to read this recognition, or do you want me to?
I have a short little recognition I'd like to say.
Okay. So I'm gonna just give a quick explanation. No, you're welcome to step up. The Radnor Township School District has met the criteria and is being awarded the PSBA's Great Pennsylvania Schools Ribbon in recognition of its commitment to academic rigor, community resilience, and financial health. And Megan O'Horick, Chief Membership Officer of the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, is presenting the district with the GPS, or Great Pennsylvania Schools Ribbon. So thank you so much for joining us this evening. We try to be a lot more humble than this, but we appreciate, you were, she tried to come in the spring, and we said, no, we don't have time, and she's been insistent about coming back, so we appreciate it.
Of course. Again, like Ms. Dunn said, I am Megan O'Horick with PSBA, our Chief Membership Officer. I'm pleased to be here on behalf of PSBA, our governing board, staff, and the entire association to celebrate Radnor Township as a great Pennsylvania school. This honor recognizes schools that demonstrate a commitment to academic rigor, community resilience, and financial health. We applaud you for your dedication in all of these areas. Your students are both successful and challenged by the district's curriculum, which drives student engagement. Your students are both successful through your innovative school programming, plus honors and awards that are celebrating the students' successes, but also fostering a sense of belonging and connection to your school community. Your robust extracurricular activities help your students develop into well-rounded individuals. Your district demonstrates the importance of caring for students holistically through emergency preparedness and mental health supports. While offering these many benefits to your students, you remain grounded in financial health through budget development, financial audits, and compliance and bid requirements. This achievement is an opportunity for your district to promote public education excellence in your community. So take the time to celebrate your great PA schools' recognition, and congratulations. Thank you for allowing me to be a part of such an important milestone at your school district. In addition, I brought a box of swag that you can use to help celebrate and allow your community to recognize this designation that you've been awarded. I also have a banner here that I'd like to take a picture so that we can use it to promote on social media and tag you guys in it as well. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you very much, Ms. O'Horick. Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine. Can we do it up here? Can we just squeeze together? I think just squeeze the swag. And then if we hold the ends of that, is that? All right, perfect. If you'll hold on one second, I'm gonna grab Megan's.
We have another recognition coming up, and I know that Ms. Brennan is gonna give an opportunity for pictures for the students at the end of that recognition?
Yes.
Maybe get a picture of all the students with this. That's more important than all of us with it.
Sure. Yes, thank you very much, Ms. O'Horick. I think the school board is fortunate enough to work with an amazing administration and teachers and staff, but we appreciate the receipt of the recognition of all their work. So students, if you didn't catch that, we're gonna snag you afterwards for pictures for this award, but we're gonna also put you in the other award picture, too.
I just got accused by a board member of not wanting to have the board members in a picture, but, you know, anytime we have students, it's wonderful to have the student.
So next on the agenda is a recognition of our National Merit Scholar semifinalists, and I'm gonna let Dr. Babson read this. Thank you.
Sure. So here's how we're gonna do this. So I'm gonna ask the semifinalists to come up when I call your name, and the first person can come up and then just form like a semicircle behind here, and then afterward, you're gonna go out in the hallway and meet Ms. Brennan and get your certificate, okay? All right. So Radnor Township School District is pleased to announce the following national, our high school seniors have been named 2026 National Merit Scholarship Program semifinalists by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. So first, Chaste Carlson? Chase Carlson? Carlton? Chase Carlton? Okay. Kayla Cormier? Okay. Elena Finelli? James Frank? Veer Gore? Meredith Jealous? Luke Howard? Maya Imperato? Ian Kim? Tate Marsinkowski? Mia Negri? Anjali Padmawar? Andrew Quigley? John Wyble? And Enre Shu? So, a little bit more about this very prestigious award. So over 1.3 million juniors in approximately 20,000 high schools entered the 2026 National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the 2024 Preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, which served as an initial screen of program entrance. Representing less than 1% of U.S. high school seniors, I'm gonna say that again, representing less than 1% of U.S. high school seniors, just 16,000 of the 1.3 million students who took the 2024 Preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test were named semifinalists. Very impressive. To be considered for a Merit Scholarship Award, semifinalists in their high school must fulfill several requirements to advance to the finalist level of the competition, including submission of a detailed scholarship application in which they provide information about the semifinalist's academic record, participation in school and community activities, demonstrated leadership abilities, and honors and awards received. A semifinalist must have an outstanding academic record throughout high school, be endorsed and recommended by a high school official, write an essay, and earn SAT scores that confirm the student's earlier performance on the qualifying test. So, the superintendent, along with the board and the Radnor community, congratulates these students, their parents, and teachers on this outstanding accomplishment.
Parents, you're allowed to join in those pictures in the back and grab some pictures yourself. You're also welcome to stay for the whole board meeting, too. Feel free.
I love how many laughed when you said that. Okay. I think we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, which is public comment. We take both live public comment at the beginning of the meeting, and if there's any recorded public comment from people who couldn't make it, if there's live public comment now, please come up. No, there's no one else before you? Yeah, no, just make sure you've signed in, but just give your name and the town you live in when you start. Yep, and you have four minutes.
Good evening. My na, oh, thank you. My name is Gregory Stagliano. I've met Dr. Bachelor before. I've met Brian before. Hi, Brian. I'm a resident, been 20-plus years, and so I've paid you guys close to half a million dollars in taxes in that time, so I think I earned my four minutes. I'm here to talk about the William Penn School District case, which I read for light reading last night, all 800 pages and 2,000-plus paragraphs by Judge Renee Cohen Jubelier. I trust each of you has read it. If you have not, you should be embarrassed to be sitting there. It is a landmark case, most important case on published school funding that's ever been written in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and in that, the Penn Carey School of Law Advocacy for Racial and Civil Justice Clinic summarized as follows. In an 800, no, 786-page decision released on February the 7th, 2023, Judge Jubelier declared Pennsylvania's school funding system unconstitutional, period. They went down to say later that Pennsylvania has one of the largest gaps in the country in per-child spending between the poorest and the wealthiest districts. They say, in their, in their report of the case, "To reduce the inequities caused by the current heavy reliance on local revenue, funds should be collected at the state level and allocated by the state through a formula sensitive to the needs and wealth of the school." I will not misrepresent to you. That is the way they summarized it. Our actual order reads as follows. Respondents, meaning all of the state defendants, education defendants, have not fulfilled their obligations to all children under the Education Clause in violation of the rights of petitioners. Article 3, Section 32 of the Pennsylvania Constitution imposes upon respondents an obligation to provide a system of public education that does not discriminate against students based on the level of income and the value of taxable property in their school districts. Students who reside in school districts with low property values and incomes are deprived of the same opportunities and resources as students who reside in school districts with high property values and incomes. The disparity among school districts with high property values and incomes and school districts with low property values and incomes is not justified by any compelling government interest, nor is it rationally related to any legitimate governmental interest. As a result of these disparities, petitioners and students attending low-wealth districts are being deprived of equal protection of law." So she found our current system, both in violation of equal protection of law, which is both a federal and a state standard, and also, she found that we specifically violate the Education Clause in our Constitution. So my simple question to you, that opinion came down three years ago when I first saw it, I was like, wow. And then I just assumed everybody would appeal, and it would be stuck for 12 years in the Supreme Court, but lo and behold, after losing motions for new trial, no one appealed. So it is the law of the land that our current system for funding public schools is unconstitutional, therefore illegal. Illegal. So how do you keep sending me bills on an illegal system, is my simple question? I don't want to be obnoxious about this. I don't want to put any of you on the spot right now. I don't expect an answer. You have board, you have board meetings I saw on your calendar for the 14th. I would like an answer from somebody on the 15th. My email is gstag3@comcast.net. If, if I don't get a satisfactory response to this, I am prepared to blow this whole thing up and bring down this house of cards, because I've had it. I have had it. Because you people sit up here and you smile, and everybody's happy, they're probably not happy in Coatesville, they're probably not happy in the William Penn District, they're probably not happy in Chester, they're sure as hell not happy in Philly, where they still have asbestos in the schools. You people should be embarrassed by the wealth of riches you have here. So please get back to me, for the next time I come, it'll be with Action News, and do not underestimate me. I brought all state to their knees. I can easily handle you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Stagliano. Is there any other public comment this evening in person? Do we have any? Okay, we do not have any recorded public comment. So the next item on the agenda is the report from the board committees. First item is the Curriculum Committee. Dr. Babson?
Okay. So the Board Committee, Curriculum Committee met on Tuesday, the 16th of September. We reviewed one club trip, one new club, and one book adoption, and one academic affiliation, and two donations. And then updates on the 2526 federal programs consolidated grant and Title I school-wide plan for Wayne Elementary, as well as the 2025 PAYS youth survey were presented. And then the next Curriculum Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, the 21st of October, at 5:00 p.m. in the usual place, the garden level of the admin building.
Okay, and the Facilities Committee?
The Facilities Committee met on September 16th. There was an, we only had one item on the agenda. It was an update on the Ithon Project, and if you didn't have a chance to re, to see the meeting, I suggest you take a look at the tape, because it was, it ended up being a really good discussion and an update of kind of just a refresher of where we are. And some key dates looking ahead is that November, we are looking to have board approval to go out to bid, and then we'd be looking for rewarding the bid in February. So we are maintaining kind of our schedule as of late.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, which, as most of you know, is where we group together a number of items that we don't necessarily need to discuss, and approval is given in one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss an item, I will move it to an appropriate place on the agenda. Do I have anyone who would like to pull an item from the agenda? No? Okay. So then, may I have a motion to approve items 9.1 through items 13.3?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Stern. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Solomon. All those, was there any discussion to be had? Mrs. Duffy? Yes?
I just wanted to comment. I wasn't at the August board meeting and when we reviewed the supplements, and I just, I just want to say how much I appreciate all the work that went into that. I know it's been a long time coming. It, you know, it's been almost a decade since we reviewed supplementals, and, you know, I think when you saw today, like, the great, great schools award, a lot of that is about our extracurriculars, about our sports programs, and our, and I really just appreciate all the work they do, because I think that's what really helps make the Radnor experience for our students so robust and complete, is just how, how many different things we offer our students. So just appreciate that we finally took the time, and we have a plan moving forward. So thanks for all the work.
Thank you. Barring any other comments, can I, all those in favor? Say aye? I think I have a nine-zero vote. Okay. The next item on the agenda is item 14. This is where we hear from our representatives and liaisons. So the first item on the agenda is Delaware County Community College. Mrs. Solomon?
Just a few brief updates. We received a report for activity in September as the Liaison Committee. There are 80 Radnor residents who are currently attending DCIU, and the other notable thing for all of you is that they are not gonna be holding their annual school board lia, or school board dinner this fall. It's usually in October. They are waiting because they're going to be opening a new campus, and they want to hold the dinner later in the year, where they can invite us all down to see the new campus. So I don't have a date for when they're postponing the dinner for, but I will surely let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a sense of when the campus is gonna be finished?
I do not, and I emailed them to inquire about both of those things, so I will let you know next month when I hear back.
Sounds good. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Delaware County Intermediate Unit. Dr. Babson?
So, you know, sometimes there isn't much of an update, and sometimes there is quite an update, and I'm gonna try to strike a balance here by just keeping it very brief that currently, we are in the middle of a process to select a new executive director of the DCIU, us board members. And I will just say that there is a robust debate, a robust debate happening about the best way to do that currently. And so, our monthly meeting, our general business meeting is happening tomorrow night, and then the following Wednesday, we'll have our committee meetings as usual, so stay tuned.
Thank you, Dr. Babson. I would hope that they're gonna follow a process like any of the districts would follow for finding a superintendent, that they're gonna hire a search firm of some sort?
I don't think that that is actually the plan. Actually, as a matter of fact, that is currently one of the items of contention and debate, that, that perhaps there should be changes to the process for the selection, so.
Well, please feel free to share my opinion on the matter with them when you get there.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I mean, I think, you know, our district, along with all the other, the other 14 districts in this county, spend a lot of money on the IU, and I think, you know, it would be in this county, spend a lot of money on the IU, and I think, you know, it would be irresponsible not to make sure that we are, for an institution that's that important, not making sure that we serve our community and especially our students with a top-notch leader for that program.
Absolutely, and I'll weigh in with my own personal opinion as well, which is that I think the two coins of the realm, so to speak, are thoroughness and transparency. I think that's what, I would endorse personally, and we might agree on that, too.
I think I would.
Okay.
Great, well, then, we, I trust you will represent us well tomorrow evening.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is the Delaware County School Boards Legislative Council. I do not have a report from them this evening. Pennsylvania School Boards Association, I know they were just here, Mr. Thornton, did you have anything?
I was just going to repeat the recognition, the GPS recognition that we just enjoyed.
Great, thank you very much. This is also where I ask if anyone has any community announcements. Sometimes there are different things going on in the community we want to make sure people are aware of. Okay, it's been a busy start to the school year. So the last item on the agenda is board announcements. We have a Facilities and a Finance Committee meeting on the 14th. On the 21st of October, we will have Curriculum Policy and GRCC, and on Tuesday, October 28th, we will be back in this meet room for our regular business meeting. Do we have any public comment at the close of the meeting this evening? We just in-person public comment at this time. Okay, then I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Solomon. And a second? Thank you, Ms. Gertan. And all those in favor, say aye. I think I have a nine-o vote on that. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.